Keep looking for the clock.
It it is time, but you're the women.
Hey John, I finally made it down through the Maple Surf chat and we didn't know that I was about two weeks too late, so there was nobody there.
What do you want? I'll get you next second.
Yeah, it's pretty nice. It was not at Seoul there, but.
If you do, you can leave it in my office and he can grab it from there. I can drop it off.
What do you want? Court?
What do you want?
Four.
Four courts.
Four courts.
Four courts. Beggars can't be choosers here.
But yeah, what a nice setup. The first time I saw it.
You can start whenever you want.
All right, well, we got ourselves a forum, so.
Hmm?
Things are getting slow.
All right, everybody, I'd like to call to order. The regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. We do have a quorum. Are there any updates to the agenda?
I do have one update. I just want to mention that the public hearing remains open for eleven oh five thirty twenty-eight. Um, and will remain open. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on that? Okay, no, no, thank you.
Okay, so under new business. We have two sketch plan reviews.
What do you want to do, the minutes?
The minutes, the minutes for March twentieth. Is everybody okay with the minutes?
Second.
Oh, favorite.
Nice.
All right. Ready? Okay, so our first sketch plan review was Joel and Alica Weber, and it's a special use permit twenty-five dash zero three nine one. And a Woodstock wetlands water course permit twenty-five dash zero two nine C. This is a sketch plan review of a site plan review and wellness of water course permit application. To convert residents into a concert venue and cafe in the Hamlet Commercial Zoning District located at sixty-seven Mill Hill Road in Woodstock. And they're up to Castilla. Why don't you come on up and tell the board what you're planning to do?
Do you pull the drawing up on the screen or should we?
No, she can, well, the drawing.
Okay.
She's got the map.
Yeah, she's gonna show just where. I'm Christina. This is Zach. Um, yeah, we are excited to talk about this with you guys. So this is the the property highlighted in yellow. Um, kind of shaped like a bow tie. It's a very unique property. It's got a ten-foot strip that goes out to Mill Hill. And um. We are proposing to use that for pedestrian access. And um, the building that we're proposing, which is a concert hall and um, restaurant cafe. Is going to be located in the first.
Behind Cumberland.
This is behind Cumberland next to Sunflower. Yes. So the pro.
This is Cumberland five here.
Yeah, you got it. Yes. And then that's Sunflower. Um. And so. The property has a right of way for vehicular access that. Could come in from the rear of the property. But it's a residential area back there. And so. One of the things we looked at right off the bat, you can see that, see above it where there's that. That kind of.
Island.
Yeah, it's like.
Yeah, that's exactly that. Kind of represented what we imagined to be like the planning of the cul-de-sac. And so our property has, we can act like we the rights are to access it from that.
From Bob White, exactly, but none of that is constructed, so it's all, it's a very nice wooded area back there. Um, so we're not proposing any changes to that area. Early in the process, we got in touch with Sunflower. Um, and they've been very cooperative. Um, so our proposal is to. Share access um, from their parking lot. From in here.
Correct.
Yes.
So you will need to documentate.
Of course, yes. Good. All of this right for a discussion now. So, I mean, just broad in broad strokes before we get into our our drawings, that there's an existing building that you can see there on the. Southern part of the, yep, of the bow tie and that building. Um, we're proposing to remove and to construct the. The new building in that same area. And then the northern part of the of the bow tie as we're proposing parking.
So how much of the wetland buffer are you going to turn on?
Uh, we are in the buffer, so we um, we can look at that.
We actually didn't, well, but we had that delineated when we did Rocco. They all go.
Behind us, yes. We uh, we also delineated it. We have it. We have it flagged.
So my, my, this part here is not accurate on my map, is that right? It's it's fairly close um, on sheets. Uh. Well, you pull up sheet.
Did we get those? Three eyes, are they? Three point zero, yes.
I won't worry about it then.
If you go to page three. I can't show these. I mean, if you, it's easier for you to see this copy than me. I don't have one or just. So so this is the, this is the um, buffer here. And so we were already in touch with the with the D E Cs. We've we've. Put in the application with them and we're currently awaiting review.
Maybe. There is no determination.
You got it.
Brand new world.
Yeah.
So basically, if we think about, we we call this property the bow tie. So the 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 northern part of it. Is pretty much in the buffer area of of the well and so it's about a hundred feet away from the the nearest flag we could we 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 put in. Um, so what we're proposing is to put the building itself completely outside of the buffer. Entirely. Um, so that. Just the northern portion portion of of the property would be used for parking. And then we would propose some kind of permeable paper. So that um. So that it would basically behave as a field. Straight. The concern that I would have about something like that is not so much. Whether water can get through, but whether. Like oil and other things from cars can get through. So. So yeah, the way that we 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 typically deal with that is to not. You would like like for oil, for example, you would want it to, if it were going to fall anywhere, you'd like to fall and then essentially go into the ground and not. Run right when you come hard to the water water ship. So that's essentially what we're proposing. Peter, you know more about this than I do, certainly. Is that permitted use?
Well, I don't know. There's a couple of issues. Um. Shared parking. You know, because. Um. The health food stores has accounted for every parking space. But of course, they're closed during. You know, their hours and they may have different hours. So we did the same with the bar on the other side, where we allowed them to use the same parking spaces.
Yeah, but that that's for the parking that belongs to Sunflower.
Right.
You guys are talking about adding parking in that area that is buffer. So if you go to cage.
Seven.
What proposing is the in the light blue. These are the the two parking areas that we proposed.
And taking these parking spaces and waiting from. The other, so.
Sharing, yes, but yes, i- i- if if, yeah, share.
Sure.
The reason I say that is because the same reason that, you know, what Peter just brought up is that the, you know, there. There will be offsets in 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 use, time to use. Um, that's true, but also that the restaurant we're wanting to keep open at the same times of of at Sunflower. So um. There's there's share.
Okay, so I'm going to bring up something as somebody who used to rent space at Woodstock Healing Arts. That parking, okay, that parking lot right now, and one of the reasons why I don't I no longer rent space there, and a lot of the practitioners don't rent space there. Is because there was never parking there from eight o'clock in the morning until eight o'clock at night, never, not a spare park. Okay, people cross, walk across the street, all over the spit, the place. Um, Sunflower promised to create more spot parking spots. The only parking spots that they did create were spots that were. Literally that they self-created on wetlands behind the area.
Behind the building, behind?
Behind the building, yeah. If you go in, there are little signs that now say employees only. So the employees only park in the wetland, which during the winter, when their cars used to get frozen. And he also never plowed the parking lot or he iced it, made it a very dangerous place. So there is no parking there. Um, now I'm seeing you want to add parking. Okay, add volume there. Um. And then also being one who's familiar with the wetlands behind that, um, because it's a little hiking path behind there. That's really beautiful.
Right here, yeah.
Okay, um, and this visualizing the overflow of it during the spring rains and everything else. So that's not like, it's that's a major wetland.
Well, the the problem is that. When sunfloss came before us, they wanted to do something there. They wanted to put tables and seating.
Yeah.
And we denied it because it's in the well. And that was just tables. It wasn't parked.
Just don't see parking in a buffer as an appropriate use. It's it's going to contaminate the wetland. That's my concern.
Well, not only that, but you'd have to pave it, otherwise you'll sink.
I thought they're talking about permeable papers, but still. It's going to contaminate the wetland.
The D E C is not going to have. Papers on the well, as I can tell you that. But we'll wait for the D E C to weigh in on it. But um.
What's the town's um, like, like, what's the town's strategy in general with parking? Like, the parking seems to be.
Well, we have a pay and loo.
Yeah.
Which uh. You know, it started out years ago uh. To actually pave and and create town parking areas. But uh. As it stands, you're really, when you pay for a parking space, there isn't.
Well, it's really, what it, what it, it's like, uh, not invisible isn't the word, it's um. Almost uh. Was a good word. Virtual.
Yeah.
You know, like, you gotta think of it as a virtual parking spot. That's it. But you know what, like, you pay the town. With the town, your your people can can go to your venue and you can say, oh, well, we have a, we paid a lot on this parking lot. Yeah, yeah.
Right.
There's some of the stuff is required, parking for employees and stuff like that.
So there's a certain.
A lot of, a lot of towns and cities are just saying, well, if you want to have a business, it's your problem where to park, you know, it has to be parking for employees and stuff like that.
Right. I I'm asking just because, you know, our, when we're looking at this and, you know, obviously, this is, you know, there's a lot to talk about with. With you folks and and understand what the concerns are so we can respond with our with our design. And but. I mean, my experience, I don't live here, I live in Red Hook, but coming to Woodstock, it's it's difficult to find. To find a parking spot oftentimes, so and we thought that it would be positive to provide as much parking as the site allows. And to be as considerate as we can to the environmental. Concerns, but to balance that, um, you know, I mean. I could understand a world in which we. Wanted to. Take a more minimal approach to providing parking and and.
See, we, when Rocco was the fourth, which was quite a event, it was a five-year. Planning session to get Rocco in. A lot of the problem was uh, this wetlands that goes all along that parking lot.
Right.
The well actually goes into the parking lot.
Right.
And uh, as she said, there's signs now that say no parking because you're actually in the well, even though it's blacktop.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And the creek overflowed right in that that section. But this is a a very wet area. There's actually drain, there's actually catch bases right in there.
Yep, we have that shown on.
And I believe that the uh. That the tech, that the uh, Woodstock Commons has, as you said, a path, I don't know if it goes through that beach, which is a path.
It does. It's right here. And there's, yeah, there's pedestrian access, so.
So you'd have to check with Rocco because they have acts, that's that's part on their plan.
Right, and what?
That was their, that was their whole pitch for letting us put Rocco, letting that whole thing in there was that they had a path to get to town.
Can you show us what Rocco is, uh, what what you're referring to on this on this um?
Where the drains are?
No, um, I I'm just not familiar with with the Rocco.
Everything, everything was all back in there.
That whole house.
I see. And then you're saying that our.
It's a ton of importance.
I see. And then there's a, there's a trail that connects to that. That was part of their approval.
Right.
Got it.
And.
That 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 terminates kind of in the back of this.
Kind of in that, yeah, in the back. And so what what we're proposing to do, I mean.
Is to is to actually catch that.
Yeah, catch it.
And pull it through our our little sliver, right? We have this like weird little sliver coming out to Mill Hill. So our idea is to catch that trail and make it more. Like, terminate, it's actually just come out to the road without having to go through.
How's that possible?
You definitely have to check the webbook because they have rights there. And that was, that was a major part of approving Rocco.
And, okay.
All right, because what you're doing is you're crossing behind uh, Sunflower. If you take that path out, so if you take that path out and change it, you're either coming right into where uh, Meadow used to be. Or you're coming right across Sunflower back where Sunflower has all of its unpacking and packing and everything.
So this is where it is right now. See, this is right here. And and then we.
And this is the, this is the back, this is the back of of Sunflower where they have the the trash compactor.
Yeah, and lots of trucks and all of the delivery all the time.
And that's where that, that's where that path comes out. And so what we're proposing is to, is. And and this is not, I mean, it's kind of like a weird way to get to this. This is a very small proposal, but um, to to kind of. Grab that path and make it more safe and bring it out to Mill Hill using the ten-foot swath of land. That our property has, if you if you see that, we have this kind of funny, funny leg shape. Um. So that is not a draw frequency or is it a draw frequency? Yeah, we can, let's let's talk about that. So just if you could zoom in just a little bit onto the property on the on the.
Minute.
Yeah. Or we can look at paper either way, but. I like the yellow eye, the outline. So, so usually like the tie of the bow tie, right? That string coming off of it connecting with Mill Hill. That's only ten feet wide. Um, which, which just doesn't really work for a for a traffic pattern, right? Recognizing that the drawing is got the drive, it's got the.
Yeah, it's.
Sorry, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Problem with with the tax maps and the photographs, they don't line up.
Right.
It it's like, yeah, there's on, in front of Sunflower, there's this kind of like. Little arc, you know, there's a tree and there's like some some rocks and there's like, so it's that space right there.
Um, and that grass.
That we're talking about. So.
Strip.
We we were thinking, yeah, we can't really use that for. You know, cars at ten feet wide without changing lot lines and blah, 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 right? So we're thinking that that would be pedestrian only. Um, that's how pedestrian traffic would come from the, from Woodstock into uh. Into the property. So it would have nothing to do with the parking lot and no safety concerns. Um, but that was kind of our main entry. Parking lot with access from Bob White?
No, we're, we.
That that we very early on didn't want to do because of the. The nature of of those. So you'd have to bring them off the, off the sun.
That's a, that's a very complicated section.
Right, yeah.
But let me, let me just bring up something that, first off the bat, I know you guys said you applied to D E C, but I just hope you are aware of the new D E C regulation.
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
One of them is. That um. They can declare a wetland, a a wetland of importance.
Yeah.
And they can change the buffer from a hundred to five hundred feet. The other thing they have is any wetlands in municipalities. Can get greatest buffers because their main concern is that most wetlands in municipalities have been filled in and gotten rid of. And so they're going to protect what's left. And I would think they'll consider this a major.
But in any case, it's a hundred feet.
It's, it's at least a hundred feet, but D E C could. But uh.
Absolutely.
Up to them.
That's exactly why we, whatever they say. Um, that's exactly why we've already. I have two other questions. This is the, this is the proposed roof line on seven? Uh, yeah, it does show that. And you have talked to the building inspector about Vulcan area? Yes. Yeah, we 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 reviewed Vulcan area and um, it is our tip to meet it in in every way. Would think that was awfully close to the.
I was going to say, it looks pretty close to.
So that's, that's exactly where it is. It is, it is, it is on the, it's on the setback line. So that's that's what we've adopted and it stays within the.
To do this, yeah, on the first page.
Get back to your issue of parking, which is your most important factor of wisdom. Is that even if you're going to make an arrangement with the health food store. That. Doesn't go with the land. In other words, if that health food store changes hands. They could have a different opinion.
Totally heard. I I think our our strategy there, we've already, we're already in contact with them. We've already been talking with them. They already have been positive plus we. Uh, we feel, we feel good about this. And and to Melissa's point on before, obviously, we're going to have to show, show that agreement. Um, the second thing is that agreement would be an easement that would go, we proposed would go along with the properties and not the property owners or however we wanted to read. Write that agreement. Um, and of course with the. If Sunflower.
And you get there.
Yeah.
Correct. That's, that's, that's all.
Yeah.
But that sounds perfect. You know at least what you're looking at.
Because that's really your best option to get parking is to come in through the other way off the off the Irwin Lane.
I mean, I know we could, we could do it as a right, but we don't want to.
Well, there's a, that's a legal question whether it is a right or a right seat. That Rocco went through that whole thing.
Mm-hmm.
They wanted access through there.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
And they couldn't get it. And he ended up with a little tiny strip that you can't drive over or do anything because it's through the weather.
Take a ride when you leave here.
If you look at, if you look at.
What road is the complex on?
To to Rocco's, yeah.
Just take a look at what they did so you have an idea of what's the road that Rocco's on by.
It's not Playhouse Lane, is it?
Playhouse Lane, yeah.
Okay.
It's right there.
Yeah.
But you, their plans are available. You can get ahold of the Rocco plan and see where the wetlands are and and what all their contingencies are.
To be a hundred percent clear, um, we've had the, just so you know, we've had the wetlands flagged by a biologist on our property. Um, so everybody knows. So that was, that was done. And then we had a surveyor go out and locate those flags. And then that's what we're, that's what we're seeing on the strip. Right? And we've submitted that to 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 Butch as part of our wetlands and.
I do have a letter from Mike Knowitty also, but.
Great.
Thank you.
And this is an enclosed or foreign. Yes, we're not going to have, you know, say, sound problems with neighbors.
Right.
Absolutely.
No outdoor, no outdoor music.
No outdoor music, no exterior sound.
In fact, when the construction of the building, we're building it. With. Particularly with that in mind, to make sure that everything is contained within the building.
Essentially, the the way we're going to achieve that is is concrete walls around the concert.
It's what?
Concrete.
Concrete walls. Around the, around the concrete wall, the concert hall, but then cladding that with with wood materials.
Yeah.
That that stops the, you know, it's, we're we're playing with things called S T C ratings, which is the central transmission class. Uh, and so we have a certain target that we're trying to hit so that it would be essentially side outside of the.
So how many seats are on this table there? What is it?
Room seats, but but standing room for two hundred fifty. And then there would be seats, so the, so we would have. The often for seating that would be put in, but so it'd be like, you know, it wouldn't be fixed.
And that would be about a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred seated and two hundred fifty standing.
And that's the building.
Two fifty standing, right?
Two fifty is the max.
That's our design, that's what we're designing to.
Yes, yeah.
Fifty is.
And then the rest.
Five feet of first.
And the, um, the restaurant is forty-six seats.
And that's to the same, in the same shelf.
Yes, same shelf.
That's a lot of parking.
So it's it's funny that we, um, so we, if you go to. Uh, page seven. We all, we have parking considerations there on the, on the, kind of mid, uh, call, middle of that column on the right. Parking consideration. So that 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 runs through our our calculations and and your zoning code. And we came to conclusion, um, you know, obviously for consideration, the provided total of thirty-six spaces exceeds the requirement twenty-eight, ensuring ample parking capacity for either use scenarios. What we're talking about there in use scenarios is that when the concert venue is going, when it's, when it's, when it's active, um, the. The only people that can be in the building are have the tickets to the concert. So it's never double top. Right? It's basically, you think about it as the cafe being full. That's what it is like most days. We have a concert. Then essentially the venue's full, but the cafes are empty because. That, right? It's just, it's the sharing of people. The cafe will never be open to the public while we're having a concert because it's a ticketed event. So that that kind of helps with the park. That's how we got to um, using, using our code under mixed uses on the requirement of twenty-eight.
How often do you work in ten or heavily concerts?
As much as possible, um, probably. We, that, that's really up to, that's up to um. Our client and the operators, but I think that, that, you know, it'd be great if there was a concert.
Every week.
You know, maybe like a, what, a weekend, you know, maybe every weekend there's, there's, there's one, but um.
Could there be a two, two events on the weekend?
Boy, we're getting a lot of enemies.
It'll be very interesting if they decide to use one of those parking lots for the housing.
Well, the the biggest issue you have is the parking. The one in the back is up to D E C. Whatever they say is what it's going to be. I can't imagine they're going to allow parking on a well, but.
I have the same.
Yeah.
But that's, that's D E C's choice. Um. I see Nor Wiki hasn't got his signature on here, but it doesn't matter because D E C. Uh, trumps everybody.
Right.
So that'll be a question. And as she pointed out, this parking here. I can ever park there when I want to park here. It's all with.
Well, it's, it's not bad. It's resolving.
Yeah.
Okay.
And everybody, everybody parks in their parking.
Or for, yeah, everyone parks or for, you know.
An issue for sure. I mean. I'm sure if you get.
Feeding your traffic. I mean. If you've got the parking in the back. And assuming you've got the use of the parking at at Sunflower, you're feeding the parking through the Sunflower. I mean, the the traffic through the Sunflower parking lot.
Right, and. You've arrested ingress out of those two spots with customers and people coming in. It's, it's really, it's an unsafe parking lot now.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And it can't handle the volume of everything coming in that's not.
You can see we're a little skeptical of this.
Would you feel that the, that coming off of Bob White was preferable?
I don't because it's a neighborhood. Okay, and I I think you're really going to get a lot of pushback on that. Okay. Um, there's a lot going on in in full transparency in these only small little streets with little neighborhoods. And I even tend to going to get pushback from the guys that are in Rocco. Right now, and the people who own the homes behind that. Um. Because it it takes, it makes what is a somewhat quiet area into an area that they chose not to live in, which is why they live where they live. So and a part of what we do on the planning board is about the people in our area, their safety, it's their livelihood, it's other things. Um, so I.
I mean, technically, it's. Family commercial, but still.
Yeah, but good, you know, it's family commercial, but it's not for, you know, two hundred and fifty hout circles. It's a different thing when they then have, but it, I think, yes, I think.
There's a weight to the east stage, just the right seat.
And I just want to be clear about, I just want to be clear about the the uses, right? So the, the, it is, it is in the H, it is in the H C. Um, and we're restaurants serving out. Um, and we have restaurants serving alcohol, uh alcoholic beverages as a permitted use.
Yeah.
We have motion picture theater, theater for dramatic productions, concert halls is a permitted use.
Mm hmm.
We have tavern and bar and I flow as a permitted use. And so when our client bought this property, they bought it with that understanding that those were permitted uses in the town. So um, that's just just.
Well, that's all cleared by the zoning inspector, so.
Of course, and I I I hope that we I hope we're at that point to be here, so in front of you that that we have a permitted use.
The U T.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The U T can deploy. No, I understand.
And we're and we we share your concerns. So we, you know, I think.
Right on the edge. I mean.
Yeah.
The edge of the zone is like right on the edge of your.
Right. And so, right, it's like now it's looking at, all right, so that's a permitted use and our Vulcan area is is permitted. So that's where like the two hundred and fifty comes in, right? Like that's that's what the zoning says is allowed for this site. So now it becomes a conversation of like, well, how can we design this in a way that's beneficial through the community and where we're we wanna have those discussions.
Like I say, the biggest thing you'll be waiting for is D E Cs.
Yeah.
What they say, because they could change the buffer.
I think there's two things. D E C is one. And the other is whether Sunflower would.
Parking. Parking in general.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if, I mean, parking isn't our problem. If it, you know, that's your business problem. If people have to park in the in the town parking lot and walk there.
And if you meet the calculations that are required.
It's not a, I mean, you can buy this space.
Well, that's, I mean, that that I totally, we we want to provide responsible means of parking for sure. But if the only option to make this viable is pay and loo, we are a hundred percent willing. Like I can speak on behalf of our client absolutely um, open to that. Um, open to uh alternate means of kind of solving this problem as a community, right? Is there a is there a fund that, you know, that is there something that we can do to help? Is there something that we can do on a larger scale that that in 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 goodwill, you know? How can we? How can we help this problem not not, you know, uh, make everyone feel like we're making it, we're making it worse?
Yeah, parking is an issue. Um, I don't know, board members, if you have other questions, really honestly, you're gonna have to wait for D E C because.
So is there any?
Because we have our own wetlands law in Woodstock.
Sure.
D E C has now got new laws that could change buffers and stuff. We have a hundred foot buffer. So for our code, it would be a hundred, but D E C could change it.
Um, absolutely.
And as I said, they have a part of the new D E C code has to do with wetlands in and communities in in towns.
Mm hmm.
So that's.
And it's, you know, we're we are we are a hundred percent um, up up on this stuff. We we work with uh wetlands all the day, all all day long. We have we have two or three projects in front of the D E C right now. Um, so this is something that we care about and that we look at the D E C like. And so
Yes.
what we're wondering is, you know, I mean, I we're we're my mind goes is it that let's say, let's let's just let's just talk it out if you guys you guys want, then what happens if they say no?
D E C?
Right. If they if they somehow said no, then there would be.
It's not so much the no, it's gonna be what buffer they give.
Right.
And what they allow.
Designed from that buffer.
Right. I think part of our part of our explanation to the D E C has been um, in our in our correspondence is that we're not building any closer to the wetlands than the existing buildings. So that's kind of one, right? We're not the the existing, the building that was structured.
Yeah.
D E C is more comprehensive.
The structure's the problem. I think the parking is.
Totally agree.
Access.
Right. And 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 so to that point, yes, I think the parking is malleable and you you're absolutely right that like we can't, we can't finalize this design until we have D E C.
But I also wanna point out that Woodstock has its own wetlands
Mm hmm.
law. And our law says that if you go in, if you are in the buffer, you wanna approach upon the buffer, we have to add that much buffer space back. You don't have the room to add it back. In other words, you'd have to take this area and add that area somewhere else.
It's like a give back. You take out of the buffer, so then you have to guarantee that this part of land is gonna be untouched. We hope sometimes it's near the wetland area, so we can think of it as like, you know, right there where it really needs to be. But yeah, so you have to make up whatever buffer you have somehow.
I mean, it's not like, you know, five foot or something. It's a huge piece, so you'd have to add that to your property, which obviously you don't have room to do.
That's the mitigation within the Woodstock law. Okay.
But we still will wait for D E C first.
Mm hmm.
But just remember, Woodstock has their own code. So even if D E says we're not, we don't care, then you go before the Woodstock code.
Right.
And our code would say we have to replace that buffer.
Okay.
And our code probably would not allow parking.
Okay, okay.
Or at least, you know, of 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 any kind of semi-permeable kind of because you'd sink it to park here in the spring, I'm telling you.
Yeah, I'm looking at where else people could park. I mean, CBS.
People. That's nightmare for anyone too.
Yeah, I mean.
Again, Sylvia. And um and you know, there are a lot of restaurants in town right now that um people who's parked and then you have people who just walk.
Mm hmm.
And there's just enough parking.
It's a dirty door that they park in front of driveways and it's just.
Yeah, maybe we park up here and then they'll walk to town. So even during summer, all of the park, the spots in Vermont. Yeah. You know, and then people who live in then around the area, you know, not to come to town.
It is a lovely idea, but we.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the board is trying to shoot you down. I think they're trying to tell you what you're looking for design and what they're gonna need to see. I think that's.
Mm hmm.
There are some difficulties. That it's a little hard to see the way around.
No. And like people even on parking on the side streets, people will put their garbage pails out. People will pull their cars out of their driveway so that you don't have them there, so that they don't have to deal with anyone who's not a neighbor's car. I mean, it it becomes very proprietary when people that don't belong in the community come into the community for activities and take up parking in their neighborhood.
Mm hmm.
So.
I mean, it's it's the way to the future right now. Even Kingston and cities like that are allowing businesses, restaurants with no parking.
Right.
Because they say, well, your problem, figure where to park. But uh, as you're saying, in our town, we only have a couple of actual municipal parking lots.
Mm hmm.
But they're walkable, but not close, right?
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
But that wouldn't stop us.
For the board, I, we, you know, we know this is preliminary. We know this is the conversation you wanted to have.
Yeah.
That we're super glad you're working with D E C and have spoken to Sunflower because the two concerns, I mean, that's good. You came in and you had those.
Mm hmm.
Um, but if you have any other questions for the board?
Well, yeah. I think I think the question is, is there any way for us to continue our review, to continue the drawing process as we do this?
Well, as I say, you have two issues. That's wetlands, D E C and parking. Uh, the wetlands is up to D E C. And if they don't, that'll be the Woodstock. And parking, you can buy parking in lieu of.
And nerd out.
But you make the right calculations.
Right.
But you do have to have an agreement with with Sunflower that is binding on their successors that would give you access.
Yes.
Which is kind of complicated. So they already have agreements with other businesses in that complex for parking spaces.
Mm hmm.
But.
Or, well, I mean, but if the design, if the design were to shift where this parking lot were to shrink or completely go away, I think, you know, we we're still looking at the connection between this area that's already paved and our building. I mean, as the logical access point, so.
Cause it's already.
Cause it's already paved. I mean, we, I mean.
But that's, we went through that
Mm hmm.
with with that parking lot and part of that paid parking lot is wetland and it's you know, you know, we didn't make them rip it up, but.
Totally understand that. I mean, but that's like, we like, I guess what we're saying is in terms of design, like yeah, we're we're already rolling with the D E C. We're gonna see what's what happens there and we'll, you know, we'll we'll see where that leads us, but we can.
Cause they do have their trash can that they have all their trash and stuff is sitting on that corner where the trucks have to come in and out.
Mm hmm. And yeah.
Tight spot.
They were ashamed of us.
Just to share that.
Just share the area, clean it up and like put it in.
We agree. It looks bad back there.
Oh, it's chaotic back there.
Well, anyway, board members, John, anybody have any other questions? I think you just have to wait for D E C.
Okay, that's question one.
That's good.
There's there's they're not um, they're not, they don't um, speak to necessarily their agreements. Um, and that what ends up happening is like they had five spaces that were for Woodstock healing lots. And then what they did was that then they put in two electric car spaces after the agreement was made and those spaces didn't belong, were no longer part of the stock. So gee, if they if they did it the way they were talking and there was a legal agreement and an easement created, it would be for the future of forever. So that's the way to do it is like, so where that was more like what they did. But that was a legal lease guarantee. What they did it like, like this is more of like, like when we do a survey, like this this easement would be forever and then someone has burden, someone has benefit and there it is. And so
Right.
they're headed in the right direction on where they're thinking. It's the best.
Oh, yeah.
You know, that that won't happen because it's it's a step above what happened there.
Mm hmm.
That's a legal question, which we don't, but the question is, if you get an easement, yes, from the owner of Sunflower, yes, but if they sell the new owner may not want that easement.
No, but if
But it's there.
If Sunflower makes that easement, it's part of what goes.
Then it's then it's a legal easement.
We sell it, the easement goes with the property.
Well. Um, does the, is the board have any other?
I mean, assuming your lawyers are are competent.
Yeah.
Right. And to get that in that easement would also be that, you know, somewhere in there that the area was a clear free area. Because you could have that easement.
Mm hmm.
Oh, you mean that it can't be blocked off.
That can't be blocked off, that you'll be driving around garbage trucks and dumpsters and
Understood.
and trucks coming in.
Yes.
Okay. That's where the legal comes into it. So it's not really, this is planning.
Do this.
Yeah, we just wanna see the documentation that it was done. So when we get there.
When we get there.
Conversation is good to have.
Um, just overall, uh, in general, with the rest of the the site plan, the the, I mean, if light, do we want to talk about lighting or?
Well, that was gonna do it. We do a final site plan and review when we take it lighting and stuff like that.
Yeah, you're gonna have that.
Yeah, we'll get there.
Yeah, so it's.
I mean, as long as as long as you work with Butch on the Vulcan area, so now I suppose the civic design people will wanna have.
That's up to you guys.
Get the design. But I think we don't have, we don't have to take their advice, but.
I think they should probably get for D E C before we send them to, and I think we need a little bit more of you guys on board until we send them to C C D. What do you think? Cause I think this is really beginning.
Oh, yeah. No, don't.
Yeah.
To the.
But eventually, yes, because C C D is kind of the hand lotted town, so they're gonna wanna make sure that it meshes with the architecture of town and all that. Yes, but.
Is that a separate board or is it get referred from from this?
We refer it and they meet you as soon as possible and work with you and just it it's pretty quick, but it's in within the process of us.
Mm hmm.
But I think you should be further with them with the wetlands, with the, you know, like do the other stuff on the outside and come to us.
Before you spend more money.
And exactly.
Know that you can figure out how to do the things that you absolutely have to do.
I try to think as economical as possible. We don't wanna send you to C C D several times. We run it.
And then your process, when do you, when do you start Seeker?
Right now.
Okay.
Soon as you gave me the the short form.
Okay.
You all are lead agency.
Mm hmm. Well, we're agency for every application.
Okay.
But see where it goes.
There's nobody else involved.
Yeah, and I do.
Did you?
Is it type two?
I mean, that's up for 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 you to determine, but.
Will you tell me what you think?
How how long would you apply to D E C?
Um, about two months ago.
Two months.
Well, we, D E C likes to put in there what they think is too, so we like that. But but when I first did look, I I did lean towards it. It's it's permissible and it does look like type two and it falls under. But again, this is all under the review and it continues. Seeker continues with us. If we need to declare lead agency, we will, but as of now, you're reviewing. We don't have, this is the start of, you came in and talked to the board for the first time.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
It's always a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Right.
With your favorite.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I work very.
House on John.
Oh, thank you.
Justin.
Thank you.
I have to tell you.
Yes.
Guys to came in about a year ago and went through tons and tons and tons of styles to prepare to do that. So they have really done their homework. They've met with Butch and I several times. Um, they're trying to work for their client very hard, but due diligence wise, they they really.
Oh, and don't forget to check with Rocco because you can, you can find their maps, their files. They're filed with the county. You can get it from the county or from us. We have them. But check the Rocco because that's part of their app, that's part of their approval.
Will do.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, good. Our next sketch plan review is Jesse Bull, planning board case twenty-five dash zero seven five five A. This is a sketch plan review of a minor plan review of a minor subdivision application for a lot line division of two parcels resulting in two lots of seven point seven and seventeen point five acres by transferring two point two acres in the R five zoning district on Montel Malina Woodstock. And you're not gone.
No.
For Don and he's coming to represent for Jesse Bull.
Oh, I got tired of doing the whole thing by itself, so.
Can I have a question about this?
Yes.
Um, the map for the that other parcel that you sent us um, the one that ends six point two ten, that was not on my previous map. It is on my current map, so there must have been a sub.
There was the county did some things. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this really easy for you guys, Peter, and I've looked at this.
If you look at it up here.
Jesse Bull owns two pieces of property.
Right.
Right now, his driveway is on one and his house is kind of on the other. He is literally taking his driveway and putting it on one parcel and leaving the other one. He's moving the lot line. He is literally taking his driveway and putting it on one parcel and leaving the other one, he's moving the lot line. So there's no easements, there's no nothing, I don't know what he plans to do, but when you look at a, a map and you see a driveway.
There right now, so this is.
Putting, putting the driveway on, on the parcel of the house.
This is. Somewhere in here.
Yes.
Okay. See, on my old map, that number didn't even come up, and then when I looked at the current map.
So the county, yes.
Somebody dropped the ball along the way with a file map.
And it might have been. It might have been a ton of years ago because all of Jesse and, and Don and Lois, nothing about that this was sitting and hung up in the county. And we had a file, so Karen and I actually were putting our heads together to try to figure out what the county was doing and what Jesse was doing, or did the same thing or did the different?
But there was another, there was another property a while back. That they actually went backward in what they were showing on their maps compared to what was real. They lost a subdivision that had been there.
If you look at the, if you did a full property report on the parcel viewer, there's a special note in there that I think they. Threw in just recently to sort of cover themselves.
I basically don't use the purple viewer, but I do get, I do down, I mean, this is pretty much a live. The, of the max map. Coming from, I guess, the real estate.
So obviously, we're, we're not crossing septic lines, we've got our wells and our septic, some where they all belong, yeah. So, everybody take the look, let's please take forward.
Both parcels owned by the same person.
No brainer.
No brainer.
The whole time, for the previous case.
So, I mean, what can I tell you, I would say no further review. If you all, if the board agrees.
Absolutely, absolutely. Second, no further review.
Perfect, so I will do a resolution because we'll have to make that's and that's go to the county and that has to be signed. So at our next meeting, which is May fifteenth, the board will approve a resolution and then I will get it off to your office. Tom Brewer. Oh, it's me, me or him, him, I think. Maybe yours. I can have it? Thank you. Great, perfect.
I like this six o'clock thing.
Hey, good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you, Colin. Welcome back.
So, so Don and I have sort of complimentary uh. Skill sets, like the stuff I don't like doing and he likes doing.
Oh, good.
The things he's not crazy about is this, and for some reason I like hanging out with you.
I'm having so much trouble with that, I can't get it to draw that property.
They have an application coming, make a fee.
So, unfinished business. If you guys remember on Library Lane, we had the case where the ladies wanted to uh split the property in half, the house on each.
Yeah.
And we said the map said no further, what, no further uh subdivisions. Well, we got a letter from the owners of the subdivision. Who said that um. The reason they said that, they didn't want any more development. And because this action isn't creating any more development, the houses are already there. That the owner who made that subdivision said that it's okay to go ahead and subdivide. So.
Peter went to the county also, like I've been doing like work, Peter went to the county and talked to everybody. So, we, we've really done.
Yeah, I asked him what it would take, if a map says, if a subdivision map says no further. Uh, subdividing, what, what you could do to overcome that, and it's complicated, you have to extinguish the entire subdivision completely.
I'm not surprised.
So that would not be an easy thing to do. But at any rate, so what we're, where we're at now is we're gonna make a motion to request the. To grant the request to subdivide that property pending applications to follow.
So, does somebody have to extinguish the old one or?
No, no.
We figured it all out.
We didn't go that route.
Okay.
The, the owner said it's okay, cause there's no more development.
So who's second? Mine. We wrote, uh, in your email, uh, we. Peter and I wrote a beautiful letter too, so now they're gonna start the subdivision process and they're gonna go and do the subdivision and do it exactly as legal. But our letter literally mentions material item, so legally, this letter is very detailed. Okay.
Glad it works out for me, because it. Common sense doesn't always.
Um. So just, just really quick, we're not having a meeting May first, um, I'm away next week for three days and. It kind of worked out, I was doing scheduling and a bunch of people preferred the fifteenth, so I said to Peter like, hey. Kind of hard for me to pull it off if I'm not here for days next week. So, we'll see you guys on the fifteenth, we'll have a heavy schedule, um, also on May fifteenth, Judy was invited to an Ulster Strong Housing Summit. Um, she is more than welcome to go and I will happily give her continuing ed credit if she writes me up a little blurb. Which is really lucky of me. Um, but if any of you wanna go and I don't have a forum, I, I would, you can go, it looks like a great panel, it looks like a great meeting, it's in Kingston. Um, just, I asked that you just let me know before, so I know if we don't have a forum and then I will cancel the meeting.
What's the title?
Ulster Ca- Ulster Strong Housing Summit Invitations.
Who's running it?
County for the wood. Yeah, it's all on there, I'm right now, I put it on my phone.
I might be able to figure it out in the night.
Alright, uh, one other note, folks, an update, y'all, on the eleven oh five Route twenty eight gas station.
Oh, yeah.
We wrote a letter, uh, our, our lawyer, John. Wrote a letter to the Department of Transportation, asking them to review that uh intersection. And get back to us with some kind of an answer. So we're leaving the public hearing open. Um. And our lawyer said that uh. Even if the D E C, I mean, if the D O T says that it's okay and we say it isn't, and we go to a seventy eight at least by keeping it open. We're being as open as we can about it, so the judge has to get it. We give it the most chance in the world to.
And you guys were all emailed yesterday, a response from D O T, um, another D O T letter that was within the submission. So put everything together and John and him have gotten all of them.
Just put the Ulster Strong thing up on the map, this is the kind of.
Yeah, I printed it, I thought it was. But we have information on that if you want it, just like I said, just for me now. Any questions?
Yeah, I could share the, the invitation with everybody, but this is. This is who's doing it.
Oh, yeah, right.
Oh, Steve, no, well, okay.
Yeah, James Franco is a supervisor in the town of all, it looked like it could potentially be good, so I, yeah, commend you if you wanna go. I also think you guys, Albany County is doing the planning for workshop.
All day long, right?
No, like, three, eight, I think, or something, I don't know, I sent you the information on that too.
So, did you send, did you send this to everybody?
No, this one I didn't, I figured we'd talk about it now and if you wanna go over.
I can send it to everyone.
Okay, do we wanna, do we wanna adjourn, folks?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, hold on. We've got ten different things, hang on, hang on.